Yes.
It's in the little bit.
Ms. Lisa, are you ready? You ready?
Grandma, grandma, grandma.
I'm on my way.
You're not rebooting again, are you? Really?
No, it was working.
Spoiled by those three day weekends.
That's the new one, the old one? Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay. What's it say on the screen?
Restarting.
Oh. Is that what it says on your computer?
Three dollars, three.
You know.
Blue screen.
I tell folks if you get an Apple, you want to have blue screens. But then you gotta learn how to use an Apple.
They don't really matter. I got the other stuff.
It's one.
Yeah, it don't matter. Bring back two bushels of apples. I didn't realize how big a bushel were they at. And they went two of these. Well, we thought they only wanted one size. No, they never wrong. They only want one bushel. We put one bush on the car, and we borrowed. We borrowed. She decided to text us. Says I'm backing up. She's like, wait, we're gonna pull back in. If you had a bushel, it'd be better than two bushes. It would feed a lot of apples.
Are you ready, Alyssa? Do you wanna try and go with that? Okay, we'll call this meeting January the 5th, 2017. The Mayor and Council Monthly Work Session to Order. Do, uh, let's see. First thing we need to do is adoption. No, we don't need to do that. Do we do adoption of the venue in this? We don't, do we?
No, you can, um, you can ask for any changes or anything like that, um, 'cause it's a work session. So, any additions, deletions, anything. But there's not a formal adoption, sir.
Do we need to make any changes to the work session agenda as it's presented? Okay. Uh, Section A, Parks and Recreation. Vicky Coleman, I don't see. So, I'm assuming you're gonna talk about item one.
News, news to me. How about we just jump down to B and I'll text and ask her where she is?
Okay.
'Cause, um, I mean, I can, I can, I can certainly address it if you want, but I don't know it as well as she does.
No, I would like to, you know, just, I would like for her to be here to answer any questions that we may have. So, we'll, uh, we'll skip on to item, I mean, to Section B, one. Mirror Lake Mart.
Okay. Um, sorry, I'm just... All right, uh, Mirror Lake Mart. Um, this is, um, a request for an alcoholic beverage license. This is the, um, uh, you all will know this as the Swisty, Swifty Save. Uh, it is, um, they actually, Swifty Save renewed their current license. And, uh, but they're in transition over to new ownership. So, this will be the new owner. Um, they've gone through the normal background check, um, and procedure. Um, and, um, they have been informed that there will be a public hearing at your, um, Tuesday meeting.
And the applicant has been told to be at the meeting, correct?
Yeah. And then, um, you've, usually, um, I hate to call it the riot act. Sometimes you just ask the city attorney to read them the riot act and he says whatever it is, but he can tell you whatever it is, whatever that little is. Like, you know, you're gonna have undercover, you know, ops and black ops and all this other stuff come in and buy your beer.
So, we can just hand them a copy. Get them to sign up.
Yeah, I think it's important to be reading down the record, though. I think that's...
Yeah, and I think it makes an impression upon them to hear it live and in person and know that they'll, they'll feel the wrath of this council if they mess up.
So, if you, I'll be happy to read that, or David, you can...
If you're comfortable with doing it, you can take over the role of Jake Collins and do it yourself.
Uh, Jay used to love, he was, he just loved that.
Jay who?
I think he did enjoy doing that, yeah, 'cause he put emphasis on it, certain parts of it.
Representative Jay.
All right, so we'll do that. Moving on, item B.
All right, um, item B is actually a, um, a new location. This is, uh, a correction. Change in ownership of the applicant. This is the South Carol Food Mart. Speaking of Jay, right across from Jay. Um, so as they say, here we go again. Um, this one has changed more times than any other applicant since I've been here for the year and a half as city manager. So, this is the South Carol Food Mart. And same thing, there'll be a public hearing. Applicant has been informed of the Tuesday meeting. And they are changing the licensee holder of record as to, um, uh, who holds that license.
Any questions from council? Okay. Item three.
Uh, number three, uh, was a holdover. This was, um, action of the council in 2016, um, waiting until the current council, uh, was fully seated. This was a request for a conditional use permit for the purpose of keeping livestock, uh, in single-family residential zoning. Uh, it has previously gone before, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission, I think, twice. And I seem to recall, um, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but, uh, it was split twice, the vote. Um, was there a definitive approval or denial on this, do you recall?
I think it was two-two. There was a number of misses.
Both times?
But it was a different number.
Yeah.
You made the observation that because it was a different number, that it was essentially like a three.
Exactly. Yeah. So, um, so I can't say that we have a definitive, but, you know, as, I can go back and research the, the two votes on it. But, but the end of the day, it had gone to this body for a recommendation and, and ultimately, the decision rests with this body. So, it's scheduled for a public hearing. And there's a very lengthy packet with supporting information and documents in the packet. So, you can, you can certainly discuss it today, but you might wanna just wait till the public hearing.
As I recall, there's chickens and goats.
I think they dropped off the chickens. Kim, did you drop the chickens?
Uh, I said that I would. I was informed that as a written variance, I could not drop any.
Okay. But the council could, in its decision, limit it to just goats, for instance?
Correct.
Yes, okay. So, yes and no, I guess, is the answer.
How many goats do we have?
Was it, was it?
I think it said twelve.
I think it was six.
Six?
Twelve?
I thought I saw twelve.
Yeah, it wasn't twelve. I think it was six.
I think I have an answer to your questions that you might have. I'm not talking about full grown gator. I'm talking about little tiny miniature gators like that at, so that, or the time out.
It says up to five goats.
Five, five or six, yeah.
Okay.
So, is it councils wish that we, uh, have discussion now or just put it on the, uh, agenda and talk about it next Tuesday?
Probably better to wait after you've had the public hearing.
Okay. Okay.
Well, i- in the packet, we don't have anything from P and Z, and I'd like to see that. I'd like to see, uh, a recommendation.
Were you?
It was a two-two.
I just heard the vote, but I don't know if there were people who showed up in support of or against. And I'd like to know who voted which way, so I can speak with them.
Yeah, Madam Clerk, do you wanna send him, uh, actually send the entire council the minutes from both of those meetings? Thank you. Actually, if you'll have, um, Rhonda, she's been, been, if you'll secure them and send them.
Okay. Tab C, Economic Development, Main Street slash Tourism slash PowerPoint presentation slash...
Nick's the PowerPoint presentation. Are we slashing these, uh, tourism and Main Street? Is that what it is?
Oh, he does?
No, we don't.
Wow, I was kidding.
We're slashing all that? We're slashing all that? Is that what it is?
Isn't it ironic that the computer doesn't work for your PowerPoint presentation?
Bobby dang.
It's one of those days.
You might wanna consider updating this, this computer.
I think it updates every time she turns on. You turn it on, what, once a month? Yeah, I think she turns on the computer once a month, and that's the problem.
In, in her defense, I will state that she was here thirty minutes early and had everything up and running, and the microphones all worked, so that is not her fault.
It's the weather.
It's the snow coming in, that's why.
Mayor, I can wait until the computer, or I can go, you know, wing it, however you wanna do it.
Which is quicker.
We can come back.
Yeah, we can wing it, that'd be quicker and would be informative every week.
Well, you asked. That's, that's an honest answer.
Did Vicky respond? David?
Um, I hit her at both, not yet. Um, and, uh, in fact, even our CFO's not here. I mean, like, I don't know what's happening today.
Well, the council liked to do the low hanging fruit thing. We moved to item two, which is the renewal of the agreement.
There you go. I think that's an excellent idea. Move on to item two.
I thought we was nicking all of it and slashing it.
Oh, yeah, this is, this is, uh, this is painless. This isn't, uh, causing any, uh, harm for, for the city or the, or the council. This is just our annual renewal. As you all know, Villarica Main Street is accredited. Main Street is accredited by the National Organization. Every year, we have to renew an environmental agreement with the city and, uh, the state, with the Department of Community Affairs. And this is just a standard of renewal of our agreement that we will follow all the guidelines of accreditation for an accredited Main Street program. It's basically the same thing that we've done, uh, since we've been accredited in 2007. It's the first year.
So, this MOU is the same as we had last year?
Chris, I do have a, a question. And, and I, uh, I have asked this question before, but never been able to sit up here and ask it. So, can you tell me definitively what the Villarica citizens get out of the Main Street program?
Sure. Um, from being accredited or just period?
Period.
Okay, great, great answer. I think traditionally what, um, people have the misconception has been that Main Street is a event coordinating, um, program. And really, it's an economic development tool. Uh, and if you look over the last year, you'll see a lot of the things that we've done as far as economic development as it relates to, uh, not only working to recruit new businesses, but also to strengthen the businesses that we have here. It's always been my motto, that it's easier to keep a business and grow it than it is to recruit a new one. And so, we've, this past twelve months, we've really put together a lot of programs to help strengthen businesses and make sure, uh, that they're profitable. Quite frankly, um, mom and pops have a hard time making sure, you know, they're gonna pay the light bills, pay employee, or they're gonna pay for product to sell in the store, or they're gonna pay their insurance. And so, anything that we can do from an economic development standpoint, uh, we definitely do that. And so, some of the things that we've done this year, uh, we initiated the Boost Grant. Uh, this year, we gave out $3,000 in grants. Uh, the Boost Grant is an opportunity to help businesses in the central business district boost, uh, their potential for revenue generation. So, that's, we assist with their purchase of equipment. Uh, we assist with the, uh, intensive advertising campaigns. Uh, we assist with any number of things that help them, uh, develop a product that better helps them generate revenue for their business. And so, the three grants that we, uh, gave out this year, one is for Puttin' Round, which is a golf cart place. They're gonna be putting in a retail counter in the inside. So, when you go in the showroom now, it's kinda, it's everything spread out everywhere. Uh, so they'll put in a retail counter. Will they be able to sell, uh, parts to, uh, golf carts? So, um, that helped them be able to display their products better. On Court on Main, uh, we'll be building an outdoor parklet, uh, which is something that we've talked about for several years in the city of Villarica. So, that will come to fruition. And Lost Cowboys will also be building an outdoor parklet, which will help, uh, them as well, generate more attention and traffic and, uh, people to that area of our downtown. Uh, we initiated the Main Street Membership Business Program. Uh, and if you've seen, um, it's, sometimes it's a little task, uh, trying, but we, uh, every week, we do a golden business of the week, which we feature our new businesses that are part of the Main Street Business Program. Uh, and that's basically, uh, just free promotion and advertising for those businesses. And so, uh, that helps bring awareness to the businesses that we have in, in the district. Uh, this year, we're, we're stepping that up. Actually, we just got the videos back. Today, all of, in 2017, all of our golden business of the week will have a video component where the business owner comes in and talks about, um, their business. So, it's more of an intimate dialogue with people. And so, we'll load those up on, uh, social media, on our websites, uh, so that people can be more engaged with our businesses downtown and the products that they offer. Because a picture can only tell you so much, but the video has the business owner talking about what it is they actually do and how it could benefit the customers. And, and those are just a few things. I mean, I could talk for hours about what we do at Main Street, but, um, we really have turned the focus to economic development. We still do, uh, signature events, um, as we've always done. Uh, we've been very successful in turning those, uh, uh, events into revenue generators for Main Street. So, we then take that money and put that into funding the grants that we give out. Um, we actually, the Economic Vitality Committee just voted, uh, to award an exterior improvement grant, which is a, basically, it's a, a twin sister, if you will, of the SOD grant that the DDA does, but it's funded through the Main Street program. And the money that we raise from those events goes to fund that. And that will go from a recommendation from the committee to the board, uh, for final approval. But you'll be seeing some SOD improvements going on downtown, uh, in the next two to three months because of that.
Those are good answers, and I commend you on, on stepping up. Uh, I've asked that question for years, uh, sitting in the audience. And I think you've brought value to that program, uh, and I appreciate that. Uh, just, you know, the, the, I guess, the, the rub that I always had with the Main Street program is seventy-five percent of your time is supposed to be spent on that Main Street program, Main Street activities. And that, that's a huge investment on the part of the city. So, you know, I, I'm gonna stay after that one. And, um, you know, I would like, I, I think there's value to that, and I hope you would agree with that. And, uh, I noticed in the literature that there is a logo for, and it says, "Main Street America Accredited." I've never seen that on any, in any Main Street, in any city in, in Georgia. And I'm surprised at that, you know, it...
If you go down to the Main Street office, they give us a decal that is on the door. I, there was not one when I got here, but, um, once we got reaccreditation for 2016, we did put it on the door. They have door decals.
I, I would love for, Mr. City Manager, you and, and Chris to get together. I would love to see that at our main gateways coming into the city. Uh, if it's something that we, I think we should be proud of, if it's a distinction that, that, uh, not every city has that distinction. And, uh, so I would like to see that on a sign somewhere in one of our main gateways coming into the city, that we're a gateway destination. So, we'll just, thank you for that answer, though. Why don't we do that? I think the computer's still booting up. So, we'll go down, back to, uh, Section A, item one. Ms. Vicky Coleman.
Can't hear you.
Yeah, the microphone's not...
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Do you have AT&T?
So, the proposal is for, um, gutters at the library. The proposal that was sent, it's approximately seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars. Um, if you will recall, as the library was built, um, the design didn't necessarily include gutters. What we have been addressing, um, is finding some other ways to address some of the stormwater issues that had previously occurred on the property. And this was one additional measure that we thought, uh, certainly would help better manage some of the stormwater, uh, issues that were occurring, both on the left and the right side of the building. On the left side of the building, we have an issue where the overflow from the building and the roof gutters are certainly, um, concentrating water, um, from the roof in one particular area, which was adding to some drainage problems that we were having. Also, on the right side of the building, similar thing was, is happening where the overflow from the roof, there are some issues with erosion happening on the property. So, you know, as we've sought to address, uh, issues on site as it relates to the stormwater, we thought this would be an additional enhancement, um, for the building.
As, um, as the gutters, how, how are we doing with the landscaping?
The landscaping is complete. As part of the landscaping, there were really two issues that needed to be addressed, not just the plant installation, but there were some drainage issues on site. So, um, we've addressed all of the drainage issues on site, which included, um, enhancing the stormwater system. Um, we added some addition, we did extensions, if you will, of stormwater pipe on the left-hand side, um, which is kinda in reference to what we were just talking about, addressed some of the issues with the flow, the topography on the site, and some of the issues with the water running off the building. So, there are a couple of issues that were going on, but that part was completed, um, prior to the installation of plant material on the left-hand side. On the right side, similar situation. Um, we installed drainage system on that side as well. All the drainage systems on both sides are below the ground. They tie into the dish, the stormwater system. And then, we finished the planting on that side as well.
Do you have a, uh, figure for the cost of the landscaping?
We spent approximately sixty-one thousand dollars to date with the stormwater, with the extension of the stormwater system and the plant materials that have been placed out on site and irrigation.
And as I understood it, we moved some of the railroad part landscaping over to the library and used it there.
That is correct.
And saved us some money, or...
Um, it's, it saved some. It certainly was helpful that we didn't have to plant out the rest of the, um, of the site.
Let me, um, make sure, uh, I understand this. All right, so you had a, um, hundred thousand dollar budget for landscaping. Are you saying that you've only expended about sixty-some thousand of that so far?
Correct.
Sixty-one.
Sixty-one thousand, um, so far. We still, um, we...
And you said it's complete.
Right. So, that's, that's everything that we've done on the site to date. So, what we haven't done and what we intend to do is sod in the spring. So, we...
So, we still got some sodding to do, so we're not really through.
Sodding to do. So, the, the grass that's out there now, that's the grass that we had to get out and seed for the stabilization of the site.
So, so if the council approves the gutters, plus you have the sod out there, everything outstanding, where are you going to be at the end of the day of, of the total budget estimated?
With the addition of sod, gutters, and, um, potentially the, um, any additional irrigation that we may have to do would probably bring us right around low nineties, let's say ninety-three or ninety-four.
Okay.
We would be at roughly eighty-nine thousand without the added irrigation that goes around there. If we don't irrigate the part of the site where we've had the additional rail, the landscaping from the railroad. So, that part still needs to be irrigated. That's, I'm of that opinion. It needs to probably, we need to irrigate that.
Uh, I have a question. This, uh, says invoice. Have they already started to work on this, on the gutters?
No.
I requested it as an invoice.
Did we quote bid this out?
Um, actually, this was done through, um, the Garland Group, which is, uh, on state and federal contract. Um, and because, in order to get something in time for council, um, because of the, um, shutdown over the holidays, um, I asked them to go ahead and have their subcontractor go ahead and send an invoice, so that we had a placeholder to show the council the work was being done. But the underlying contract is with the, um, uh, Garland Group, which is under the state and federal contract. Um, they actually do the, uh, independent bidding with their subcontractors.
Okay.
You just estimated a few numbers for us. Um, I'm curious if you know the, the numbers for the sod and for the additional irrigation.
The sod is, um, ninety, roughly ninety-five hundred. Um, I've been, they've given me a range, just depending on pickup or delivery. So, um, but that's ninety-five hundred. And the irrigation, um, again, the same with that. It just is determining to what extent we're going to, um, lay irrigation around the entire site.
We don't have a plan for the irrigation?
We had a lot of plant material that came. So, um, I would estimate it between six thousand and sixty-five hundred and ninety-five hundred, just based upon, um, the plant material that's, that's, the additional plant material that's come.
So, the irrigation could cost another ninety-five hundred?
That is correct. But I, it is, I'm of the opinion that for some of the places that we ended up planting the material, it certainly enhances the driveway. I don't think it should, we really should take the irrigation across the driveway onto the other side of what is the Tanner property. So, um, I'm more inclined to say the sixty-five hundred would be the more appropriate number to leave it entirely on the library site.
Well, if the irrigation did come out at ninety-five hundred, which you're saying is at least a possibility, you're looking at roughly a lot closer to ninety-nine thousand, ninety-eight, ninety-nine thousand.
Correct. And I, again, I don't think, we just had a lot of plant material that came, and, um, we certainly tried to make the best use of it. But I, again, I think it'd be more appropriate to leave it solely on the library site, which would be sixty-five hundred.
Okay. I've been over there several times, and I can say that, uh, that, uh, plant material has really enhanced that property. But I just wanna be sure of the kinds of numbers we're talking about before we...
Sure.
Are you gonna use a well with this, or you gonna use regular water?
This one is regular, um, it's regular water. So, it's just, uh, it's on an irrigation meter, um, with the city water.
Okay, the item was on the gutters. Uh, I don't, but I don't see a number on that.
Seventeen thousand, five hundred.
Seventeen thousand, five.
Correct.
Bottom right hand side.
In your pocket.
I didn't get that. This is item one. I don't have nothing in item one.
You didn't have C1.
That's A1.
Go to the next.
And you got your book done special.
I know it.
Go to the next page.
That'll teach me.
Do you, do you want a copy of mine, sir?
Would, yeah.
There you go.
He said it belongs in A1. That's gutter. Here's the gutter. A1, yeah. I am.
Other questions? I just, I just wanna make a comment, and, and I understand the company that's doing business with this company is under state contract. But there are a lot of gutter companies closer than Conyers. And, uh, you know, we're, we're gonna move forward with this one because we, we need to. But, but I would certainly hope that we, uh, at least value shop. Uh, the, the, uh, state bid is not always the best bid. And, and certainly, if there are local vendors, I think they deserve a shot at it. Just, that's just a general statement, so...
Certainly. And certainly, between now and Tuesday, Ms. Vicky has the opportunity to go check some other bids.
I'd like it if she would do that. Uh, that was the first thing that occurred to me this morning when I read through this, is, is why are we doing this in Conyers? Do we not have more local people? I mean, if they're the better and if they're the better price, I don't have a problem. But I'd like to know that we're at least looking local. If you would, I, I would like to see some additional bids.
Okay, will do.
Any other questions?
Yeah, it'd be nice to be able to come up with a, a, a plan for the irrigation system.
Yeah, it'd be nice to be able to come up with a, a plan for the irrigation system.
Yeah, that would determine the cost.
But not only that, there's always ways to water the, the shrubbery across the road. And a background that I had several years ago, it was much easier to do with the irrigation system than it was to run it across the road, so. Depending on the water pressure for the line, it's much easier just to throw the water across the street. So if you, if you don't mind, I'd like to see something, a general plan, draw it up on a piece of paper or something, and, and the PSI for the, water pressure for the, for the lines going to it. It's not real hard, I mean, you buy rain bird heads that shoot at ninety, one-hundred-and-twenty foot, depending on the water pressure, and make half circle, full circle, quarter circles, the whole nine yards, so it's not real hard to do.
Have we not gotten input from irrigation companies? I know Hydro over in Douglasville.
Yes, we actually.
They'll actually come out and lay it out for you.
Yes, we have, with the initial layout that we had done, again, we just weren't anticipating that much coming over. I had them come out and give, quote, different scenarios, if we were to just stay on the property and after that scenario, they came out and did the last scenario, once all the other landscaping material was added across the driveway, so I do have the numbers. We just had a, a new tap actually put in, it's a two-inch meter, so there's enough pressure. They've looked at it to say, you know, what it would cost and knowing what the lines of pressure that's coming off the line. So it's certainly an adequate amount, but those two numbers that I've given you, again, they're just based on two different scenarios.
Is this just one company?
Correct.
We could actually have another irrigation company, they don't charge you to come out and do a layout for you and give you a price.
I certainly can look into, you know, having another company do it. I think the numbers are, are still probably fairly close to what they would be.
Further questions? Item two, soccer uniforms.
So the department put out a bid for soccer uniforms. What you see, we got five respondents back, and these are essentially the, the respondents and the prices. I will tell you that we have looked and we did some research on the references. What I can tell you at this point, on bidder number one, they did come back as the lowest, but I didn't see any athletic references. They do a lot of promotional materials, so that did give me some concern. We have used in the past Crown Sports, has been the primary provider. Just to clarify really quickly, the twenty-five dollar bid that they did provide, so that it's apples to apples for everything, that one actually includes a bag for the players to put their equipment in, which would bring them down to twenty-three dollars, based on the uniforms that everyone else bid across the board. But these are the, essentially the numbers that were provided to us.
Have we used Adware before?
We've never used them, and they did not, with the references they provided, none of them were related to any, any kind of athletic apparel that they had provided. They were mostly, again, promotional material type company. I did receive samples from BSN Sports. I will tell you, it's not quite the same quality that we have had.
Have we used any of these bidders?
Crown Sports was the only one that we've used, and that was the one that I mentioned. They bid twenty-five dollars, that twenty-five dollars does include a bag, which is two dollars, so that's the only difference, which would, so that there's a fair comparison across the board, that one would be twenty-three dollars, based on the specs that we put out.
Did the low bidder, Adware, give us any references for people they supplied the material to?
Yes, they gave us references, that was the one that I said, none of their references were actually athletic. They do what appears to be a lot of promotional materials, but none of them were any type of sports gear that they had provided. So they certainly referenced other organizations, but not in athletic nature.
Runner-up, BN, BSN Sports?
They provided some references, I said the only difference, and they included what we asked is for the respondent to provide samples of the material as well. That one, I'd certainly say we did get the material in. It was not the same quality by comparison to what we have used before.
So, I don't see in here your recommendation. Who are you recommending that we go with?
Well, I certainly wanted to make sure that you guys had all of the information first and foremost. I would, technically, they would be the third one down, Crown Sports. I would say in comparison to what we received, I would recommend going with Crown Sports again. You don't necessarily have to, and I'm giving my recommendation based simply on, with the first, the lowest bidder, there was not, there were no athletic references, so I didn't have any information that they had previously done the work. And by comparison, just looking at BSN, the sample material that BSN provided, and Crown Sports, there is a two-dollar difference, but I would certainly leave that to you to, if you wanted to go in a different direction, I would just say based upon.
I guess, I guess I'm a little bit confused, because I look at, you know, I look at item three, and I can see your invitation to bid, and, but I don't see, I don't see anything about your specifications on either one of these. Is there a, where's your invitation to bid for item one? I mean, item two, which is the soccer uniforms. All I see is just the spreadsheet showing the bids, whereas on the item three, you have an invitation to bid for athletic uniforms, and where is that?
So I didn't put the full, each one of the responses in, in your packet, I put the summary sheets.
Well, I don't guess I have a, yeah, all I have is a summary sheet on soccer, but then on the, is, is item three, is that baseball?
That is everything, that is everything else.
Everything else.
So, baseball, softball, football, everything else, with the exception of the cheerleader uniforms.
So just so I understand for the record, you had a bid opening for soccer uniforms, and that bid opening was, what was the date?
December sixteenth.
Okay. And all the vendors that bid on these uniforms were provided with the same specifications?
Correct.
So we're bidding apples to apples?
Correct. And the only difference is with bidder number four that's on that list, they added something extra in there, which is why I made the point to say there was a two-dollar bag, so if you take the two dollars out, that twenty-three dollars is the apples-to-apples comparison across the board, which would take that down to twenty-three, and so then you have an opportunity to see.
But, what we have, what we're looking at says twenty-five. So will that be amended then by Tuesday night to say, to reflect twenty-three? Because their bid, based on what I'm looking at, is twenty-five dollars for youth and twenty-five dollars for adult. And you're saying the number's actually twenty-three?
Yes, we had to call them back to, when we went through, I had to call them back to say, what is the price of this so that it's a clear comparison? It's not actually broken out in their response that way.
This is soccer only.
Correct.
So, I just want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding what you're saying. Your recommendation is to go with the twenty-three dollar bid, even though it's clearly not the low bid, because Adware and BSN Sports did not provide ref, or Adware anyway, did not provide references from recreation departments?
They didn't send any materials in for us to be able to look at it, and with their references, they did not provide in a sports type of reference, so.
And that, that was in your document that you sent out for, to be bid on?
What I asked them to do was provide references on who have used, you know, their soccer, the apparel.
So they're non-compliant to the bid then, really?
That is correct, as far as I'm concerned.
Would, would you agree, David?
Yeah, I'm actually looking at the bid, the archived bids are always placed on the web, so I actually pulled up, and she's absolutely correct, it has, it says, "Complete mandatory bids and mental goes through." As for the vendor application, goes through the entire process, and then also specifies in great detail the description of the amount and the type of jerseys, et cetera, and then gives some additional notes as to how they're supposed to submit. And it says that, you know, the vendor's supposed to comply with this. As with all bids, it's always at the discretion of the council if they want to waive any discrepancies.
The twenty, the two dollars off the twenty-five, what was that two dollars for? I didn't understand that.
She said a bag. They, they, they didn't ask for bags, because it's clearly not in here about any bags, but apparently they said, you know.
Here your clothes in.
I've got a question. You called Crown Sports when they added a bag in to get that price clarification without the bag. Did you call Adware? And, and ask them for the materials or for additional references that would meet what, what you're explaining to us today?
I did not call them and ask them for additional references more than what they provided, no.
It's just that there's a substantial price difference when I look at them.
Sure.
And I'm listening to what you're saying, you're, you're basically telling me that Adware didn't comply, so you don't really, I guess, have confidence in them, and then you're saying that BSN sent us materials that were of a lesser quality than what we had gotten from Crown Sports in the past. And if I consider throwing Adware out, and I'm just looking at BSN and Crown, there's a one dollar and thirty-seven cent difference if I leave out that bag.
I thought it was a two-dollar difference, you've got, you break down maybe, I don't have.
Well, when you take out the bag, you go from twenty-five dollars to twenty-three.
Okay, two-dollar difference.
And then, when you look at BSN, they're a dollar, twenty-one sixty-three versus the twenty-three dollars, it's a dollar and thirty-seven cent difference.
So the BSN has low-grade material, so you.
And they did provide the samples of the.
Material.
Yes.
Let me see if I can bring some, some closure to this or some clarity. And the only thing I have to go on is experience, but I, I know in years past, when a department head or the city manager presented something to the council, we were provided with background information, and also what's your bid, what staff's recommendation, and what's your recommendation, Mr. City Manager, on, on the low bid or bid, qualified bidder? I would like to know how many kids that we have signed up. Those things are important to the council, or they are to me anyway, and they should be to all the council, but I would like to know, you know, why we're choosing, if it's not the low bid, I would like to have something that shows why we're not choosing that low bidder.
Who pays for these uniforms, do the people that are playing pay for them, or?
Well, that's another, that's another long story, we can certainly get into. I just think, you know, since we're approving the taxpayers' money up here, I would like to have the information for us to look at and, and make an informed decision, and if, if we're not gonna go with a low bidder, or even if we're gonna go with a low bidder, I want to hear staff's recommendation. And if those are, are things that we need to consider as a council, if you're not going with a low bidder because references are bad or not given, or because they were non-compliant with your bid document, then that would be helpful information for, for me to make a decision anyway, and I'm not, I'm not voting most of the time, but I think the council would agree that that would be something in the hope they would want.
Absolutely, I, I will certainly say, it is my expectation that when I'm asking for references in youths, particularly for sports apparel, that you would provide references of where you have provided sports apparel, that people have actually been able to use, and so that you have an understanding. One of their references was like the Gulf Coast Regional Blood Center. That's not sports apparel in any way whatsoever. Like the Houston Metropolitan Transit Authority, that's, that's not really sports. It's not the type of use where you're gonna actually get, where you would wear and be able to show, you know, durability of your sports material, so. That's what I took into consideration when being able to come back and say, you know, we checked references and they've certainly provided sports apparel, and these are the, the end-users who've used it before, so.
And, and I'm not disagreeing with your assessment, I'm just saying that information will be helpful for us to know in advance, so that if we have any questions at the work session, we, we could ask you those things.
How many people on this list, one, two, three, four, five complied with what you asked for?
Four of them.
Okay, and, and I guess my background again is, you shouldn't have put the fifth one on there. If they didn't comply, that, that bid should have been thrown out, and the reason why it was thrown out is they didn't comply with what you asked for. So we have four people, four. We have four bids to consider, and your, your recommendation is Crown Sports.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Item three?
Item three. Staff put out a, put out a bid for the remaining athletic uniforms. We had a total of six respondents. Of those six, four addressed all of the things, with the exception, similar situation to as before with Adware, so, excuse me, three. The lowest bidder was Gable Sports. What we have done, just so that you understand and have an, an idea of how the numbers work, we just took some of the numbers from last year, so you could, if you were to just make an assumption that we use the total number of participants from last year and applied that number across the board, this would, for this year, this would roughly be what we'd be coming back with if the same number of participants participated for 2017.
I mean, what number is that, how many people?
So, we put estimates based on each individual sport, so as an example, three hundred on the baseball. We put a hundred kids in for the softball, All-Stars, for example, so it just, it, I didn't calculate all of them as a total, but we did each one of the sports individually to come up with the number to arrive at this bid.
Is there a plus or minus factor in this?
No.
Is there a plus or minus factor with the number of kids?
Could always have to be.
I understand, but I'm asking.
And we don't know how many.
From last year, you said there was three hundred kids played baseball. Alright, now, is there a factor that you determined that would be more than that or less than that?
No, it, it wasn't, we didn't come up with a plus or minus in that regard.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, this, this figure is for baseball, softball, and football?
Correct.
How many for softball, you said three hundred baseball?
That's not, that, excuse me, that number's together in with the softball, it's baseball slash softball.
So three hundred.
Correct.
Baseball, softball, how about football?
We did two hundred, used a hundred adult.
You should have that on your.
Who, who in your department's doing these bids and middles? Who's handling them? them?
I didn't get this in advance. I'm going to get your scope.
So, I've put together the initial scope, so, and we just look at the numbers by comparison. I don't know if that answers your question, but in terms of the intake...
It doesn't. Who inside your department's handling your, the bid process?
So, the administrative manager handles the bid process. So any, once I post everything online, when questions come in, the questions are routed to her, then she'll pass the questions in to me. When the bids arrive, she and one other staff person, they open the bids, and then they'll go through the numbers together and then kind of certify what they've seen.
So would you say that, did I hear you say earlier that this is all your bids for 2017?
Correct, with the exception of the cheerleading.
Where's basketball?
Basketball's in here as well. If you, item number six point zero...
I totaled these numbers on this...
I don't have a six point zero.
I don't have basketball.
I don't either.
Oh, that's what, basketball. I totaled these numbers up on the right-hand side. It didn't come up with this bid, fifty-two.
I'm missing...
Ten thousand.
Missing basketball.
Nineteen.
Missing basketball.
Nine thousand. So where's the other?
So four point oh?
Must be basketball.
No, we don't have four point oh.
You don't have four, five, and six point oh?
Mm-mm.
Numbers don't add up.
It goes from, in fact, quite frankly, I have page one of five, three of five. So it looks like when they were photocopied, they didn't do back-to-back. Madam Clerk, do you have the original seminal?
They spin and send...
Okay. All right.
Two and, two and four are missing, huh?
Once again, I want to make this statement. Having been out there where you are, Vicki, before, I know that we can't hold these things off, you know, for another month or two, because the last thing I want is for kids to be out on the baseball field playing in, you know...
Street clothes.
Street clothes. So, you know, but at the same time, you know, we depend on you and City Manager to provide us with factual information, so that we can make these choices. Kudos to you, if you can actually pull this off. I've been in Recreation thirty-six years, and what I hear you saying is you're bidding this out for the entire year. If you pull that off, then kudos, you've done a good job. Because if your, if your bidders have committed to provide that uniform to you for the fall season, for football and for basketball, they're taking a big chance.
Well, we did that for 2016. We bid it out for the whole year. So, we went essentially through the same process, and part of that was in the documents, was you're agreeing, and we gave the timeframes of when we would do the purchasing. So all of that information is provided upfront. What comes back to us is, you're going to bid the number they provided, and you'll see when it comes, the per uniform bid. And what I'm giving you today, again, those are just samples of the numbers. We won't know the actual numbers until registration is complete. But, you know, you have an idea, like I said, if we were to take numbers similar to what we had last year and apply those to the same numbers here, this is roughly about what we're looking at. But, again, you just never know until registration actually occurs, so...
And you're exactly right. And, you know, you have all that answer, that information, but we don't. We don't have that information. We don't know how many kids you had last year, other than just what's over here on the side. So, I don't know if it's just me, but I would love to have as much information as we can. And I hope your numbers are wrong, because if I read your numbers right, you're anticipating zero growth in every sport.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, there's a per uniform bid, so similar to where you may see twenty dollars per uniform. That's what you're really going to be approving today. It's really the per uniform. What I did was just tried to show you what the number may be. Like, I don't want you to necessarily be surprised when we come back, that you don't have any idea of what it is.
Thank you, Clerk.
But, as an example, baseball, baseball, if you look in what your packet is, they bid out, that's thirty-three dollars for a youth, thirty-four dollars, fifty cents for an adult size. So, based upon the registration numbers, and you won't know that until registration occurs, registration is really just starting for spring activities. That will be the per unit number that applies. So it's not, you're not approving, say, the fifty-two thousand, you're really approving the cost per unit of the uniform.
The problem that, that comes, especially one of these, because I've had, used those guys for twenty-five years, they want to know an explicit number of uniform, but they charge you a significant amount more for any uniform passed that. And that's where the issue comes in. I say, I ask you for a plus or minus number. Now, and it's a, it's a crapshoot, bottom line. And that's the reason that normal process in athletics is to use the same uniform each year, where you have some left over, you don't have to buy them again. And you may get them at fifty dollars a uniform, but if you order more than the number you specified, it could be as much as seventy-five, eighty-five dollars a uniform. But if you order them in the beginning, instead of three hundred, order three twenty-five or three fifty, you'll have to sit on them for the year, but at least next year, you'll have that many more, and you don't have to order as, as many by doing that. And the price will, and possibly could come down. There's always a cutoff number in most of these places. It makes it much easier when you do a local company that you can run up and ask them for a uniform in case a kid, and it never fails. Somebody's going to wash your uniform, it's going to fade and stain and all kind of stuff, and mama will put a uniform in with a blue jersey and white towels, and it ain't going to work that way. So, there's always those kind of things that come about. But, but in order, in my opinion, all the uniforms I ever ordered, if I had eighteen kids on a team, I ordered twenty-two, twenty-three uniforms. But I knew next year, I didn't have to order that many based on their size as they coming out. So, that's just a suggestion that somewhere down the road may help you out a little bit.
Okay, these other bids, they were based on these same quantities that were shown for Gabe's. Is that what they are?
Yes.
Okay.
Everyone was provided the same information. As an example, if you're looking at one point zero, and it says baseball, softball, they were provided the number of what we ended up purchasing the previous year. So, everyone was given the same set of specs.
So we used the same quantities from last year? Is that what you're saying?
Everyone was provided a general number of what we purchased the previous year, so they would have some idea of where, how to estimate what could potentially be asked of them, or what the ballpark was.
How does Gabe's fifty-two thousand, three eighty-eight compare to last year's bid?
I don't have last year's bid with me, but, you know, I didn't bring the information from last year. But I can have that for you on Tuesday.
Two, two questions, and then I'm done, anyway. What was your budget this year for uniforms for all sports for 2017?
I'd have to go back and pull up, have that information of what we spent on everything this year. Because, again, same thing, we just gave the per, price per set, and then we said everything accordingly.
When, when you submitted a budget to the City Manager or to Sarah, you had a number that you asked for.
Mm-hmm.
What was that number? Do you know offhand?
That number was lump sum. That was roughly, it was eighty-six thousand total is what we spent, like, roughly last year to date. So...
And you're asking for fifty-two thousand?
Again, that, but that eighty-six was uniforms and other things that we have included. This is just uniforms.
Right. So you don't know that number, how much you just spent, just on uniforms? That's my question.
I'll have to go back and pull that. I can't tell you that right off the top of my head of what we spent on uniforms.
And the other, the other question that I have is, what are you asking us to approve, Mr. City Manager, next Tuesday night, this council? Are we approving the bid for, to use Gable sporting goods in the amount of fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty cents? Or are we approving, tell me what we're approving?
The, the department head is making a recommendation based on a per-unit price for a specific vendor for the uniforms. So, that's, that's what you're being asked to approve. The amounts are not really material, if you will, because you're based in, you've got a per-unit price. So whatever the participation is on their cutoff is when they order their uniforms. That's what they did last year.
So pages three and five, we're being asked to approve these prices per uniform.
You're being asked to go ahead and approve the vendor, and whatever that vendor is, based on the per-unit pricing, whatever the enrollment turns out for that particular sport is how it was done last year.
So that number could be a lot higher for more people, just...
Absolutely, without question.
Be a lot lower, too.
Yeah.
Could be a lot lower. You never know.
Could go down, could go up. It's amazing how that works.
Any other questions?
I think we beat that one hell, though.
Yeah.
Okay, is the computer up? Can we go with, do we have anything else for Vicki while she's up?
What's it say now? Holy cow. Maybe next time we bring two laptops.
Open, crank them up before you come.
Well, she was here thirty minutes ahead of schedule, apparently. That's what the mayor said. An hour?
What did I say?
I thought you said thirty minutes. She was here like thirty minutes ahead of, and it was working fine?
Yep.
Yeah, it was.
I mean...
It was up and running, I saw it.
Yeah, yeah.
No worries, I always have a plan B.
Yeah, so you went and print out everything, didn't you?
Make a mo- well, you again?
You again, sir.
Hey, Vicki, I'm going to go ahead and excuse you if you want to go work on your bids.
[inaudible]
That's very depressing.
We'll probably take pictures of it.
You're about to get one. He didn't make one for you.
Oh, I have a copy. That's in my, it's in my book. That's the same thing that was from last month, unless you updated it.
I updated a little bit.
Well, there you go.
Oh, yeah.
Madam Clerk, I don't have that one. We'll need to get that on the web.
Good afternoon again, Mayor and Council. For you is the revisit of the hotel motel tax presentation that we did in December. Just want to briefly go through this information. I know that some of you all were not officially in office at the time when we did this, and so just for the benefit of you all, we'll go through it very quickly, and then we'll answer any questions that you have at the end. Basically, what we're requesting is an authorization to move our hotel motel tax from five percent to eight percent. The reason why it's important to do this now is, any tax you collect for hotel motel tax over five percent requires a resolution from this body sent to the General Assembly to vote on, and then for the governor to sign off on before we can enact. So, we have a window that we have to do this in for the 2017 session. Just very briefly, there's three main tax authorizations that the state has. There's a three percent, a five percent, which we're currently at, and then they have a six, seven, and eight percent, which is all under one authorization. The pennies are allocated based on different categories and different buckets, if you will. Those buckets are determined by the state, not by us locally. So, when we say that there's things that have to be spent on specific products, that is not Chris saying that, or the City Manager saying that, that's what has been dictated by state law. So, while there are the first three pennies we can use for just about anything, when you get to that fourth penny on up, there are restrictions on how that money is to be expended by the city or a DMO, which is your designated marketing organization, which for the city of Villa Rica is the Villa Rica Convention and Visitors Bureau. The other thing that you, we need to understand is, once you get to the sixth, seventh, and eighth penny, you have what we call tourism product development. And those are physical assets that you invest money in to encourage more people to visit your city. And so, there is a minimum allocation of those hotel motel taxes over six, over five percent that must be allocated to tourism product development. And in this example I've given you on page six, a listing that the state provides of what are very vague guidelines for tourism product development. So, you're required, if you use, if you collect six percent, seven percent, or eight percent, fifty percent of every dollar collected must go to the DMO for promotional purposes, and the other fifty percent has to be utilized for tourism product development. And so, there were some questions on, in December. So if you look at the second slide on page six, and your hand out there, I broke down the pennies, so it can better illustrate what you can use each penny for. So the first three pennies, there were things talked about as far as like entertainment, live music, fireworks, product development, quality of life things. You can use those first three pennies for things of that nature. Pennies three point five are for promotional, advertising, marketing, anything that informs the public about things that are going on in the city of Villa Rica, or products or services that we have as it relates to tourism. And then one point five pennies has to be allocated for tourism product development. That's physical infrastructure, whether it be gateway signs, museums, parks. That one point five pennies has to be used for that. On page seven, I put together two budgets, the numbers are the same, I just moved them around so they look a little different. The first budget is what, when I talk about the three pennies, the three point five pennies, and the one point five pennies. Page seven.
Oh, I understand about page seven. How old are you? It don't matter.
I thought it was me.
No. There's several of the folks up here pushing past sixty-five. You think we can read something like this?
I read it as big as I could get.
No.
That's why I need the PowerPoint. Borrow my glasses.
I got a pair. You want me to hold that up here for you?
I have a year left.
Okay, go ahead.
Wait, wait a minute, let's, let's, before we leave page six, you got three pennies, you got three and a half pennies, you got one penny?
Yes, sir.
That all adds up to those eight pennies?
Correct.
I thought the first three pennies belonged to the city.
That is, that's what, so the three pennies, the first three can use for whatever. So that's what I was illustrating, entertainment.
What you got things down here that limited us, entertainment, live music?
No, these are just examples of what you could use that three penny. You can use the three pennies to pay for police cars.
Yeah, general fund. It goes, three pennies goes in general fund. So that first three pennies belonged to us, right?
Because there were, there were questions asked, could you use any of this money for specific things? And I was demonstrating what parts of the pennies could be used for different things that were requested by the council.
Okay, the first three pennies on top there, that's our money, right?
Well, the first three and the last one point five. So, if you look, and that's why I broke out the budget like I did on page seven. So if you look at the second revenue projection, and I'll try to read them out.
Thank you.
Who might be challenged a little bit.
You didn't issue magnifying glasses.
Yes, a magnifying glass, I apologize. So if you look at the bottom, so for year one, at eight percent, so this year that we're in now, 2017, we project, and I have to say for the record, I worked with the Finance Department for this, so, let's give Sarah some kudos, and/or if it's wrong, the blame, whichever one.
Well, now, that's just sarcasm.
So, we're projecting that we will collect two hundred and six thousand dollars at the eight percent rate, based on what our hotel motel tax collection is now. So this does not take into account the new hotel coming online, just because we just don't know how that new hotel's going to affect the market, as far as what the other hotels are going to do with their pricing, or what the price of the new one's going to be. So, we didn't include what we think projections of the new hotel. So, this is basically just from what we're collecting now. At eight percent, we give us two hundred and six thousand dollars. So what we're saying is the three percent, or the three pennies, would generate us seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The one point five pennies would generate thirty-eight thousand... The one point five pennies would generate thirty-eight thousand, six-hundred and twenty-five dollars, which gives you a hundred and fifteen thousand, eight-hundred and seventy-five dollars, or four point five pennies, which would go to the city. All of that four point five percent.
Four and a half pennies.
Or a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars would go to the city. Then that leaves another three point five percent, which would go to your DMO or the CBB in this case, which would be ninety thousand, one-hundred and twenty-five dollars. So that would go to the Villa Rica Convention and Visitors Bureau to promote and market the city of Villa Rica. So I put together, so it was a little confusing when I had three pennies, one point five, three point five. So the city would get four point five percent, the DMO would get three point five, which would give you your eight percent. Is that, everybody clear on that?
Got you. Is the third Sunday or fourth Sunday, are you available for how visitors, when you start cutting pennies in half, that federal law gets that?
That's true, I let Sarah work about cutting pennies in half.
Okay, okay.
And the reason why it's a half, the state law, fifty percent of the six, seven, and eight has to go to the DMO and fifty percent for tourism. Now, you can give a hundred percent to the DMO if you want.
Move on.
Nice try.
But, but you know, just wanted to put that, I just wanted for full disclosure. But you can't put a hundred percent of the money into tourism product development. So that's where you get that fifty percent, fifty percent of three percent is one point So what I wanted to do, because there were a lot of questions, and you know, I understand when we're talking about changing tax collection and tax rate, there's a lot of discussion that goes on with that. But I wanted to show you on page eight, these are numbers that come from the state of Georgia, these aren't Chris Pike numbers.
Here we go again.
Yes, here we go again. I tried to, I'll have to remember, I'll time my age times two the next time I do a print out, so I'll.
Just put that on the.
Well, I'm just twenty-four, so.
In your dreams.
But if you look, when we develop tourism in Villa Rica, we actually save our citizens money, and a considerable amount of money. So for example, if you look at the top there, we're very unique in the fact that we're two counties, but we're further unique because one county is a different region than the other county. So what you have is Carroll County, the historic, the tourism and state is broken up into regions very similar to the regional commissions. And so Carroll County is an historic high country region, and Douglas County is an Atlanta metro region. So we have different organizations, different structures, so, but, so you have two, so we have two numbers that are represented here. So the first one, so these are 2014 numbers, tourism dollars in the city of Carroll, in the county of Carroll, generated one thousand, two-hundred and fifty-seven jobs, that's just strictly tourism-related industry. That generated a hundred and forty-three million dollars for the local economy in Carroll County. And that generated five point three million dollars in state tax, but it also generated four point one million dollars in local tax. So based on that formula, for 2014, each Carroll County household, which was about forty thousand households, each Carroll County household received two-hundred and ten dollars in tax relief per household as a result of taxes generated from tourism-related industries.
So what does this mean to Villa Rica?
Well, we are, the people that live in Carroll County received two-hundred and ten dollars in tax relief per household. Because of our investment in tourism.
So Villa Rica and Carroll are the two biggest hotel motel entities in the county?
Well, it's not just necessarily hotels, what it is, is people going to museums, people coming to do family reunions, sporting events, those type things, things that are generated from people that are coming from outside of the community to enjoy amenities that we have here. Leave money here and then go back to their domicile, which is not in Carroll County. We generate a benefit from that, and to our taxpayers, two-hundred and ten dollars per household. Douglas County, because forty percent of our city's in Douglas County, 2014 numbers, tourism-related industry supported one thousand, nine hundred and eighty jobs, that generated two-hundred and eighteen million dollars in direct travel spending, that created seven point nine million dollars in tax revenue for the state, but locally, it generated six point seven million dollars in local tax revenue. And those of our residents that live in Douglas County, but are residents of the city of Villa Rica, realized two-hundred and eighty-one dollars in tax relief per household as a result of tourism and travel spending. So I say, I give you those numbers to say, and they're higher for this year, and I don't have it broken up in a nice sheet like that, they just emailed these out to us last month. But this year, for 2015 numbers, and for Carroll County, that total expenditures went up to a hundred and fifty million dollars, that created one thousand, three hundred and ten jobs, and locally, we collected four point four million dollars in local tax for Carroll County side and for the Douglas County side. That number went up, two-hundred and twenty-six million dollars in expenditures, then employment rate went up to over two thousand, and last year, fourteen, it was one point nine, this year, it's two thousand, and local tax generation is right at seven million dollars. And these are just monies that the state hires a company to come in and determine how much money is tourism and travel related as it relates to expenditures. And that's important for us when we talk about, why are we discussing increasing the hotel motel tax? Well, that money allows us to then go in and invest more money in our tourism infrastructure to encourage more people to come to our city, but we're not generating that revenue specifically on the backs of our taxpayers. So not only are we generating revenue that's not coming from our local citizens, we're turning around, taking that money, investing it in the tourism infrastructure to encourage more people to come to our city, to then increase that tax relief number that we're giving per household.
Okay, you ready?
If you haven't said that, I'll answer any questions.
Have I said and done on that bottom line here on that page eight? Have you got the resolution ready? It says we have to adopt a resolution.
Well, we can have it ready by Tuesday.
You ready for some questions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Since you already have calculated the amount of money that you, well, let me, I'm getting ahead of myself here. What's the hotel motel tax rate in Douglasville?
It's eight percent.
What's the hotel motel tax in Carrollton?
Right now, it's five percent, but as you know, they've just passed a resolution sent to the general assembly to change that to eight.
So theirs will go to eight percent also. So is it safe to say that in your research, everybody around us, their hotel motel tax rate is eight percent?
That's correct.
Okay. Second question, or series of questions, since you know roughly how much you're gonna generate with this money, do you have a budget in mind for how you would spend that? These are general things that you've mentioned here.
Well, we, obviously, you know, as far as marketing and advertising, I mean, there's, I have way more requests than I have money for, so.
That was probably a bad question. I phrased that probably wrong.
Yeah, I mean, I could spend money all day, so, yeah. But, all kidding aside, our tourism product development monies would go to a lot of that tourist master plan, a lot of the things in the master plan qualify for the tourism product development. And so that's a way that we can get things accomplished in our master plan without being a burden on the taxpayers. And so they still benefit from the quality of life things that we're doing, but they're not necessarily putting the bill for that, which is always a great thing.
I'm on your team, Chris.
Okay. That's why I started out the way I did. I tell you what I would love to see, is, you know, we have a tourism here in Villa Rica, we have the Gold Mine, the Pine Mountain Gold Museum at Stoughton Park, and I would love to see some of this money spent for promotional items for that museum. At one time, I know we put brochures in the visitor centers in Alabama, and, you know, I know, you know, on our travels, when we go to a visitor center, we pick up brochures and end up going to little places that we probably wouldn't if we hadn't seen a brochure, so that's what I would personally like to see. I don't know if the council agrees with me, but I would like to see, you know, and I'm gonna hold you to it, but I would like to see, you know, what you're gonna spend as far as Pine Mountain Gold Museum, a percentage of that money, how much you're gonna spend on events at the Mill Amphitheater. Because again, that's, you know, that's the one I hit you up with at the last meeting. Just a percentage, I don't want a number, I just want to see just roughly what kind of money we're talking about, so that I can get in mind, you know, what we're actually asking for here. That would help me out, maybe not anybody else, but it would help me.
Yeah, I would just like to say, any marketing and advertising that we've done on a regional and state level have all included the Pine Mountain Gold Museum. Quite frankly, that's the number one asset that we have from a tourism standpoint, and so anytime we put together an ad, we always have Wesley come in and sit down and talk to us, or about what it is he wants to promote and market about the museum. So if you see anything, even in the community guides that we did with the Carroll Chamber and Douglas Chamber, all have a significant part portion of it dedicated to the Pine Mountain Museum.
What I'd like to see is actually the resolution, which identifies the tourism projects and tourism product development purposes and proceeds to be allocated. That's what we have to adopt, so I'd like to see that resolution.
Mr. Mayor, your earlier question triggered a thing, and so for Councilman Carter, you're absolutely right. Last month, when it was proposed, it was trying to see whether or not there was any teeth from the council, so we didn't ask the city attorney to go ahead and write up any resolution, because again, you want to make sure that there's buy-in. So if there's buy-in, certainly the city attorney can go ahead and write that up. But the thing that triggered me from the mayor was January first has come. So as I recall, when we did the DMO, we got them through December thirty-first, and then it went to an annual. But as I recall, it also is time for the council to approve their annual budget, as I recall. Am I miscollecting that? Meaning that we'd gotten you through the first six months of the trial, it rolls over for the annual, but isn't it not time for the governing body here to see and approve the budget? Which goes back to what you say, Mr. Mayor, is that in the law, as a governing body, the governing body can't with great specificity tell them how to spend the money, but you all get to dictate the buckets. So it's time to, so your question just reminded me, the DMOs do a budget to the governing body. So when, when, when's that gonna come to them?
Whenever the DDA gets opportunity to look at it and vote on it.
So probably February?
It will, they'll look at it in their meeting in January. They didn't have a meeting in December.
Okay. So if they look at it, maybe this governing body should be expecting that budget in February?
Yeah, February.
Okay, all right.
I have to disagree with you on the biggest tourism in the city of Villa Rica is not the Gold Mine, it's the Recreation Department. And the number of tournaments they allow on each weekend, how many have you appropriated for that?
How many have I appropriated for tournaments?
Have you determined any tournaments for the baseball, basketball, football, softball?
No, we have not from a CBB standpoint, we have not.
It would seem as though, if, if Talladega Five Hundred takes over every hotel motel in the city of Villa Rica, and a lot of them in Douglasville and surrounding areas, when you bring in World Series to the, to the V-Plex, and there's forty-eight to sixty teams each tournament, it would seem as though there would be a lot more people coming to that on, from March first through September first. It would seem appropriate to be able to go and talk to those folks and see how many tournaments they want to have to, for the tourism, and tourism appropriately help those folks out.
Well, I will say this, obviously, sports tournaments are a part of tourism, sports tourism, there's a lot of cities that have sports councils for the purpose of attracting tournaments. I believe when you're talking about visitors coming as a family or group to a place to take a trip, Pine Mountain Gold Museum is our best asset. That doesn't mean that there aren't other things in the city that'll bring more people here, but as an asset that continuously brings people here day in and day out, Pine Mountain Museum definitely is our number one asset that we have.
Okay, so basically, you know, we've talked about a lot of things here, but your recommendation is, you know, I guess we just need the direction from staff whether to move forward to put this on the agenda for next Tuesday, as far as a resolution to increase the hotel motel tax from five percent to some percentage increase, if that's the desire of the council? We can talk about the semantics of it when we get the budget.
I'll agree, it needs to be brought to the council Tuesday, the resolution.
Okay, what, what number are we talking about?
It's six, seven, or eight.
He was asking for eight, right?
Is that the desire of the council? Okay. Commissioner City Manager, you know what we're doing, okay. So let's.
You had to say something?
No, I was gonna just say, it will help to know whether or not you want it to be six, seven, or eight, because it has to be worded differently under each one of those scenarios. I'm gonna draw one up under the eight percent theory, and then if y'all want to change it at the meeting, you can.
Okay. Sounds like a reasonable solution.
I like that. And from that perspective.
Go with it.
If the council approves it as written as the resolution, then we'll then, based on the actual Tuesday night, we can then kick off the mandatory advertising process, which has to occur for local legislation.
Any other comments? Tab D, governing body? We have minutes, do we have the minutes?
Wait a minute, what happened? Oh, he did name string.
He's in November.
Okay. So we will approve those then at the, at the meeting on Tuesday night. Okay, and it will also be on the agenda Tuesday night, item two, to select our mayor pro temp for 2017. Item three is Hart House and Memorandum of Understanding Between the City of Villa Rica and Villa Rica First Baptist Church, and that should be in your council packets under D three. Who is going to present this?
I'll be glad to make the initial presentation on that, and the written agreement is in a draft form, because I assume that there will be some discussion about it, and perhaps some changes being suggested either by the council or by the other party of the church. The one thing that's gonna have to be done in order, before we can finalize this, is to agree on two drawings. One is gonna be the drawing of the lift station that the city is being asked to take over from the First Baptist Church. I don't have that yet, I've not had anybody provide me with a drawing that adequately describes what the lift station is, because we want to be very clear about what it is that we are accepting control of. And I think the best way to do that is to have some type of a drawing, a plat, something that tells us where the lift station is, how much room there is around it that we are accepting.
Does someone have that responsibility to make that?
No, they don't, and that's something I'm gonna talk to the church about. They may have that already, we have, I have spoken to them about that, but whether or not they, I have not seen one yet.
They don't have, we, the time period for even retention on the records has expired, even from a government standpoint, so we don't have that. The only thing that we have at this point is the location of it on the engineering documents, but we can ask for more specificity from our Pollock Works folks.
And then the second document, which we will need, which we do have some drawings on, but we've got several different drawings, and we do need to put the engineers together to try and get some type of final document. And that is going to show where the easement that the church will agree to give to the city at that point in time when the city chooses to run a sewer line through the church's property. If you'll recall, one of the big holdups up to this point was that the city has chosen that we don't want to run that sewer line right now, based on the cost of it. Eventually, it is believed that the city will need to run a sewer line, and as part of the consideration for this entire transaction, the church is going to be committing to providing the city with the sewer easement for us to run a sewer line through their property. for us to run an, uh, sewer line through their property at such point in time that we choose to do so. So those two, uh, documents, the two, the drawings are gonna have to be finalized before we can finalize the document. On that second drawing, what I anticipate doing, we've had a drawing that was provided by Hughes Ray on behalf of the church. And if you'll recall, the city had some drawings prepared by John Bass of Georgia and West that gave us four different potential alternatives. My thought is, is I probably will just try and get the two engineers together and have them pick out a recommended line for what, you know, is most likely going to be what we need in the future. And to have the, the drawing reduced to that, uh, so that, you know, we, we won't know 100% what type of line we will need 10, 20, 5 years from now, but we can probably come pretty close and leave some flexibility in there that if we need to move it one way or the other, based on future circumstances, that us and the church will have agreed to do that.
If I can, David, I'd like to just add a, a couple of things to it. You know, I, I noticed in here, and I think it's important to, to note that, uh, under item two, it says the city will accept the dedication and deed of the gift of the house site and Hart House. The parties acknowledge that the city may enter into an agreement with the Villa Rica Historical Society Incorporated to operate and manage the Hart House and the, and the house site for the purpose of long-term preservation of the Hart House for the community. So, I'll make sure that, that was...
Yeah, that, that's the full, that's the plan, is to enter into that agreement. Uh, we, that, that is a second agreement that will have to be worked out.
Right. But I, since we have members on that committee, I just wanted to, to make that, that point. And also, uh, under item E, the sub-section E, it says perform routine annual maintenance, just, just so the, the publics understand. That is in-house maintenance. That is not through the company that, uh, that came to the meeting. Correct?
Correct. Okay. We, we can do it however we think best.
I got a couple of questions on, on the, th- item three. It says install a SCADA system, install a generator, upgrade the wiring, replace once when needed. I don't see any cost figures. Do we have cost figures on that?
Uh, my memory is that, um, Pete Zorbanos did have cost figures for that. Uh, we can make, mention to him that it would be good to have those figures so, for next Tuesday night. I don't have them in the agreement because I didn't want to lock us into it, but...
I don't expect you to have them, but I expect the, the city manager to know what they are.
Pete had those numbers and, uh, you know, that, that really was, those numbers helped figure into this entire agreement. It, as to what type of investment the city is making into that lift station to improve it. It, it is benefiting the church and, and serves as one of the considerations for, for them to give us the easement. Uh, I, I, I don't remember the rough cost of it, but there was a cost he attached to each and every one of those items.
Is it absolutely necessary to install a SCADA system to run the lift station or, or generator?
In Mr. Zorbanos's opinion, it was.
Okay. Are you gonna provide us with those cost figures, Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, we actually have them. Um, they were, um, communicated to both myself and the city attorney. Um, again, based off, um, the meeting that we had, um, the answer is, um, uh, you know, do, do we have to put all that, you know, expense into it? Um, the answer is no. Um, do you want to operate that lift station as you, uh, operate all other lift stations in the city and maintain it at the same level? Um, that's the decision of the council, um, as to, um, whether or not it wants to upgrade it to, uh, uh, make it, um, monitored and, um, maintained as, uh, all others.
This is with the understanding we're going on the lift station?
No, we're not going to own it. We're going to agree to maintain it.
Interesting concept, isn't it?
I don't, I don't know what's interesting to you.
Well, I mean, we, we as a council choose not to be involved with private property.
Right.
And yet we're going to initiate a process that we're going to take over and run a private individual's lift station.
In order to get it four acres from the Hart House?
You are getting, you're getting value for it though. And, and it is, I mean, that's a, it's a decision you've got to make. It's a discretionary decision. Uh, it's not unheard of to, to do that in that you are getting a parcel of land committed to you to run a future sewer line on that if you, if you wait 10, 20 years to get a commitment on that land, the value of that land could be much, much greater than it is if we get it committed to us today.
I, I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying. I, and just in my mind is that we have a lift station sitting in the middle of somebody's property, and we don't own it, yet we're gonna take care of it.
We, we have that in other places. Uh, you have lift stations that are on, you know, for the most part, we try and get them on our property, but occasionally it's on a property owner's association's property.
We have one in particular that no longer have access to.
And it was my understanding that there are probably, uh, a number of, of those where they're privately owned, but the city maintains them. The questions I had, uh, you sort of have alluded to, uh, getting, I want to see the plat for Exhibit A, and that's part of that drawing.
Right.
Uh, I want to see Exhibit B. Uh, that's not in my packet. And that is, uh, with regard to the, uh, sum of $11,470.50 that we'll be paying, uh, to the church.
That was for the Hughes Ray drawing?
Okay. Is that what that...
Yes.
...be? But I'd like to see that. And then my question, my, the, I, I'm assuming the answer's gonna be no, but, uh, I want to know in that deed if there are any restrictions. And I don't necessarily have to know that right now, but I do want to know. And then the last thing Danny touched on is, uh, A through E, I want to see some costs associated with that.
Sure.
Um, and I'm, I'm not asking that they be locked in, but I want to have a good idea of what we're talking about upfront.
Pete Zorbanos had a projected cost for each one of those. I mean, it was not a, it, it, we didn't have any bid documents, but he had, you know, a projected cost for each of those items.
And that would be sufficient for what I'm asking. I just, it's not in here, and I'd like to see it.
I try, I try and gather all that by Tuesday.
Further discussion? Questions?
We don't have...
We do public comments in the work session.
No, I, I, I would suggest, Dr. McBrayer, if you just talk to them after the end of the meeting. I mean, they're not taking any action tonight.
We have comments Tuesday night at the...
Okay. Further discussion about the Hart House resolution? And, uh, thanks to David and David for working this out with the church and, and pulling those, those, that agreement together. Again, my statement from the front first has been, um, this is not a perfect scenario. I don't think that we would normally enter into an agreement like this. Um, however, things happened. And, uh, I wanted to prove value for the money that the taxpayers were spending, and, uh, to my satisfaction, that has occurred. And, uh, so, you know, that's just a, a general statement.
Mr. Mayor, one other point I should make, just to be sure. Uh, the church, I'm, I'm giving them a copy of this immediately also, so they can look, if they haven't looked over this document, they may have changes, suggestions that we'll want to go back and forth on. I don't want it to come across as, you know, I've prepared something and it's a take it or leave it deal for them because that's, that's not the case.
You're saying they haven't seen this yet?
No, not yet.
Do you anticipate they'll see it before Tuesday night?
Yeah, I'm gonna send it to, uh...
Okay.
I'll send it to them as soon as I can, which probably will be early tomorrow morning. I have been in contact with the, the folks from the church, and we've worked very well together. They understand it's coming, uh, and, and I think they feel like we're trying to work with them to come to a good resolution.
Okay. Item four, meetings. We have a, a lot of things, as has been pointed out in, uh, um, Mr. Denny. We have a lot of things coming up in our next 100 days, so this will accomplish some of those things. Uh, our council retreat, I think most of us have already been in, in contact with, uh, Murray. And, um, if you haven't given him some input, do that. I, I, you know, I think the, the, um, I think we've decided that we're gonna hold off on that for some amount of time. I don't think we've set a date for it, just so, uh, Mr. Weed knows that. Is that fair? Okay. Um, city work, city charter work session, um... Let's let the train go by. Gosh, a train in Villa Rica. I, I have a question before we, you know, delve into this a little bit. Um, I talked to David, and, and he provided me a lot of information on this, and, and I think he called it a placeholder that we have to get, to get this on the General Assembly for approval, because it does have to go before the General Assembly for approval, since it's changing our charter. Have we missed that deadline?
No, the, um, the, uh, actual cycle has not, uh, kicked off yet. So, um, what it comes down to is if you think that you can wrap up everything necessary, um, public hearings, public notice, all of that, before the crossover day, um, which is 20 days into the session, um, you would still have time to do local legislation based on, um, the local delegation rules. It's always been my experience, now I don't have firsthand knowledge of this legislative delegation. We haven't, since I've been city manager, we haven't done any. But traditionally, um, uh, they'll do local legislation, but they won't go past, uh, crossover day. Um, so that's not something I've asked or, or confirmed. Um, so, um, uh, if, if you start holding work sessions and start hammering out, um, you could, um, uh, basically get a finalized, uh, version of a charter, um, get the blessing of, um, uh, the council, um, as a resolution, um, and then, um, have the, um, Legislative, um, Office Council, uh, in, in, uh, cooperation with the city attorney, write up, in some cases, the city attorney will actually write the charter, but other times, um, uh, the Legislative delegation will have it written up. Um, and then that gets in the process. So at the end of the day, it really depends on how fast you want to move. And, um, um, and, and that's gonna determine whether or not you have a, um, uh, uh, basically a, a prefiled bill for the next session.
Crossover day is...
That will determine on the governing body, uh, the legislative, it's not a set date I can give you. Uh, certainly, um, uh, later this month, uh, they start, and, um, i- i- it's all how they want to spend those 20 days.
Yeah, I, I guess it's probably February 10th to 15th.
Somewhere between that. That's what I was getting to. Do, do any of us really feel like we're gonna have this charter ready to go about a month from today?
No.
Nope, because we're working on the budget.
Okay. We've been working under this charter for how many years?
Uh, 1979, I think, maybe.
Okay. Uh, I think it's safe to say, I mean, you folks correct me if I'm wrong, you know, is there... Do we need to move forward on this at great haste and have meetings in the next two weeks to, to try to hammer this out? Or do we need to say we're not gonna make this next session and work on it throughout the year?
Let's hammer the budget and then worry about this later.
I think we, that means we'd have to put it out next year because, uh, obviously we're, it's gonna take all our time hammering the budget out.
I mean, I'd like to, uh, get to this charter right away, but, uh, we do need to get the budget out of the way. I have no problem with, with working, uh, a heavier schedule, but if that's not gonna be the will of everybody else, I'll be going on for the ride.
Ms. Shirley?
Well, I don't want us to be rushing and get something done just to get it done, and then later on, oops, uh, we shouldn't have done that.
Yeah, the charter's important.
No, and, and if we need the budget before we need the charter changed, I think we need to work on the budget first, just like that.
So my unofficial count on that was, was, uh, the majority wanted to hold off until later. Yeah, we appreciate everything you said, though. Thank you.
Um, since we're talking about the budget, which is the last item on here, I personally believe, uh, since we do have some changes, we, the council, that we want to incorporate into the budget. We, we kinda have to have a call meeting, hopefully this month, to, um, address those.
Correct.
So I think next week, either Monday or Wednesday, or we need to get on with it so we can submit our changes to city manager and move on with the budget, get it changed.
Suggest a date, sir.
I did. Monday, Wednesday, next week. Call meeting?
Monday doesn't work for me.
Okay. How about Wednesday? After the Tuesday meeting. It'll be the 11th, I think.
Wednesday's wide open.
Uh, what time are you thinking?
Uh, it's up to the council. I'm, I'm available most any time.
Reason I ask is I, I, in anticipation of this, I tried to pull together the master calendar, just to make sure we don't have any conflicts. You have a, uh, Historic Preservation Commission meeting in the chambers at 6 o'clock that evening. Um, though you can always have it, you know, have a meet in a different location as long as the public can come.
We could meet earlier, 4 o'clock?
That's what I meant.
4 o'clock good for everybody?
4 o'clock next Wednesday on the 11th. Is that suitable for Councilman Bass and Councilman Marshman?
I'll have to check my calendar.
Could you move a few things on downstream?
Fish aren't biting yet.
I don't know now, that's, that's my dumb...
It's gonna be real cold.
And I don't know it's cold. That'd be fine.
Okay. Call meeting 4 o'clock on 11th to do the budget.
Um, is that, okay. Never mind. I, I know the answer.
Sure will be glad when we get our library open and get a CO on it so we can start having meetings if we need to, rather than just have one site.
We have a CO.
We have a CO on that building? Okay.
We just don't have all the furniture.
All right. Uh, work session to discuss exemption of certain, uh, senior citizens from paying property taxes. It's my understanding that all we need to do is, is, uh, we're gonna, that's, your recommendation is to put that on the...
Yeah, that, that, that is a times, a time-sensitive matter if you are planning to do anything on it this year because that too has to go before the legislature to be, uh, give us the power to hold a referendum. I spoke with the election superintendent of Carroll County who said that if we were going to have an election, I believe it's March 23rd or 24th, one of those days, that's the only permissible date to have it in time to have it go into effect for this year. If, if we don't have it done at that particular election, it won't get done until next year. Therefore, there would be no senior exemption for 2017.
But you said this has to go before the General Assembly.
It has to go before the General Assembly to authorize a referendum. And then we have to have a referendum where the citizens of Villa Rica vote on approving whatever y'all choose to, to make the senior exemption be. And so step number one is gonna be this council deciding what you want the exemption to be, whether you want to just do a repeat of what we did have in place, or whether or not you want to do something different. Uh, and then we propose it to the legislature, have them okay us having a referendum, and then the citizens will vote up or down on whether to implement that senior exemption or not.
They just face the same deadline, the February 10th, 15th deadline?
Y- yes, and prob- and, you know, maybe even a little bit sooner than that because in order for the election superintendent to call the election and, and advertise it, I'm guessing they would, they would need to, um, to be able to call the election by that time. So I really think you're talking about doing it in the early stages of the legislature.
So, so, Mr. Mayor, here's, here's the pickle.
Yeah.
So, because, uh, I'm aware of another city unrelated to this type, but, but that same thing, it had to do with, um, it had to do with a mayoral election, in fact, where if the General Assembly can't get it passed fast enough and get the governor's signature in order to meet the superintendent's agenda, that election couldn't hold. So they actually had to go without a mayor for almost a year. So, so we probably ought to call the local delegation because this, this governing body will have to make a decision for what it wants. We have to do the advertising as quickly as we can. We have to get the, um, delegation to fast-track it. So... to fast track it. So, so we have to make sure they're all on board. And then someone's got to champion it to get the governor to sign it into law as quickly as I can if, unless I'm mistaken.
No, that's exactly right. And I think all of that could, I mean, I think people would fast track it for us on a matter like this if there's, if there's not any controversy amongst the council. And if we send it with a three to two vote, it's not going to get fast tracked. But if you send it with unanimous vote that this is what we want, and really all we're asking for is just a referendum to get in front of the people to vote. Most, most people are not going to give you a hard time about letting people vote on things. But I, I think all that really has got to be done in the next couple of weeks so that the legislative delegation could do their thing probably prior to February the 1st.
Well, can we just back the next Wednesday up an hour? Make it 3:00 instead of 4:00?
Yeah, we can come in, staff can come in with, with recommendations and, and some calculations and things like that for each scenario.
We're going to tackle this, this item, senior citizens' taxes.
Yep, we'll just move our, yeah, we'll move it up to 3:00.
I don't mind 3:00.
We're getting, we're getting things done. That's a good thing. So just, just for, you know, my knowledge, what happened as of January the 1st with our exemption?
With our existing senior exemption? It's my opinion that I've rendered and I'm 100% certain about it. So it's not a question in my mind. But because we did not have a referendum on the enactment of the last senior exemption, that it's just void. And the law is pretty clear that without having a, granting a tax exemption, without a referendum, it's void.
So it could have been challenged at any point in time along the way. It wasn't.
But I don't want to leave it out there to be challenged again without having it done the correct way.
So right now, it doesn't exist.
Correct.
And both counties know about that. Douglas and Carroll?
Yes, yes. We've communicated that to them. And, and the net effect of that is, is that when the, the tax bills are sent out for 2017, there just won't be any additional senior exemption. There are, there are still some senior exemptions granted by school boards and by the counties, but there won't be any additional city municipal exemption unless we do something to change that between now and April 1st.
I don't see that happening. But, so, you know, the net effect of this, Sarah, is that, did you anticipate that revenue continuing as it has been? And I know the answer to that's probably yes. So this is going to, another thing that's going to hit the budget. Our income revenue is going to be down at least some amount.
It's going to be up.
I mean, it'll be up because, yeah, that's correct because we're collecting more taxes.
There's no exemption, so we're going to get more revenue.
But let's not talk to any windfall here until what happens with the resolution and the vote.
I understand. I just wanted...
No, no, don't use that date because that's an incorrect date.
March 23rd?
Yeah.
I just wanted to, wanted to make sure everybody understood where we were as of January the 1st.
Okay, well, that may be it. It's, it's that third week of March.
Okay, next item, work session to discuss senior discounts on water and sewer rates.
Duh.
That one's probably ought to be a more dedicated meeting, in my opinion, but that's just me. There's, there's some other information to be brought to the table that's going to really have you, well, I'll just bring the roll leads with me. I'll just leave it at that.
We start taking away all the senior exemptions, then we may have a right.
You, you don't have the artificial time restraints on that that you do on, on the tax exemption.
Right, so that's not a high priority either.
Not a, not a pressing.
Okay. Work session to discuss long range future of enterprise funds, water, sewage, and solid waste.
I don't think that's a high priority either.
Let's do breakfast one morning and we'll let it go from there.
Your enterprise funds are losing money.
We have to get some water balloons and, and squirt guns and everything else. Duel at dawn or something.
Well, I do think it's important. I mean, you know, our CFO has, has told us and our city manager has told us that our enterprise funds continue to lose money and we're subsidizing with the general fund. So, you know, I, I agree that it's not a, you know, one month, two month pressing item, but I do think that we need to, you know, look at it. So is it safe to assume that perhaps in the next three months?
I don't know if three months would be appropriate. I don't know if three months would be appropriate. I think it needs to be done not as soon as possible, but maybe the next month, month and a half. Yeah, I'd like to see us put it on the schedule. Even, even if you don't make a final decision, being able to communicate and talk to different folks and understand the limitations of what they're going through, it could be, it could be a two month process.
I have my calendar open.
I'll open mine up, too.
Cricket.
Somewhere in the middle of February.
Somewhere in the middle of February. Say February the 15th?
That's fine, six to me.
Everybody good?
That's right next to Valentine's Day, right behind.
Well, yeah, 15th comes out of the 14th every year.
Yep, every year.
Every month, I think.
Is everybody okay with February 15th?
That's fine with me.
All right, what time?
To be truthful, how about 16th on the Thursday?
I'm going to insist on the 15th.
16th works for me, too. Is that?
3:00?
3:00 on the 16th?
Okay. That happens to be my open day.
Madam Clerk, you go out and give us all these lists of all these dates we're going out, dates together?
Is this for both the senior discounts and the enterprise funds? They're kind of related.
And we're going to determine the discounts before we get to this.
Then we're going to have to schedule that before?
I think when you look at all the rates, the structures, everything like that, y'all can discuss that in tandem if you want because I think it all goes hand in hand.
I agree.
So both?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll do both.
You say both? Water and sewers, is that what you're talking about?
Both the senior discounts and the enterprise fund.
Okay.
I will tell you, we did get one customer today that came in and signed up for the senior discount and asked if he could get credited back for the last four years because he's been a senior for the past four years and he didn't know about the discount.
What'd you tell him? You brought it up?
Moving on.
What, what time do we say that?
3:00, I think is what we said.
3:00?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
That's on the 16th?
16th.
3:00.
2/16.
Okay, let's see, work session February 2nd, 2017, and proposed adoption of the budget.
Y'all just reset that.
Yeah, we just reset that, so that's.
For next week.
Now, we have not set a date for an adoption, however, Mr. Mayor. We only set a, although it's a special call, it's a work session, but whenever you have a called meeting, that means that you can actually take a vote. So, so you could have it same day, but, but staff needs to be able to, I mean, once I get some information, staff, we can go and do our gizmo and, and actually feed you back some information. So I would suggest that you give us time to play Wizard of Oz behind the scene and...
On the 11th, that's the date. We got a special call. We're going to give you recommendations, right?
Yeah, we need that to be a call meeting.
But we need to schedule a week later or something like that for the adoption, maybe two weeks. Well, a week later, I'd like to see what we've, what you made.
Your impact, the hay, as I say.
I'd see another balanced budget.
Could you do that within a week?
Yeah.
That is a call meeting on the 11th because we will have to do some voting, I'm sure.
That's your birthday, Danny, just so you know. No, it's not, never mind.
My birthday?
Ron Carter.
Just bring him flowers.
Didn't know it. Two birthdays.
So you're saying the 18th, Councilman?
Yes, sir.
3:00? Seems like a common time.
3:00 sounds good to me for the, to see the new budget after we've given our recommendations the week before.
He needs to pass it out to us and let us look it over good before we can have a meeting. So he needs to have a...
We move pretty fast.
You want to get it, what are you suggesting, Danny, that he gets it back to us by the 18th?
Well, we need to know when it's coming back to us because we need some time to look at it and see what he did.
Well, we need to give him direction. So you, you'd like us to have it back by the 18th and then a week later to vote on it or something?
Yeah, something like that. I think we have a meeting scheduled later on.
So we'll call the 18th, final budget review by council.
3:00.
3:00.
And then as long as you get an adoption by January 31st, you can actually do a retro according to state law.
Sounds good.
It's actually very beneficial, especially from an audit standpoint.
So if we do that on the 18th, is it then feasible to have a meeting on the 25th to adopt the budget?
Let me make sure we, we're meeting on the 11th to input, give our input into the budget for him to correct the budget. And it's going to take him a little while to fix it. How long does he think he'd fix it, city manager?
Ms. Sarah and I will just spend some late nights together.
No, we don't, I mean, we're not pushing.
I mean, we're not meeting on the 18th, so that's a week later.
Yeah.
You know.
We're, you know, we've got a meeting coming up the next week after the 25th. Well, no, two weeks next one.
We, we will give it to the council on the 13th.
Okay.
And by, by close of business. And then you all can like go through, through the weekend and then we can hash it out again on the 18th.
Okay.
And if you make any other changes, we're going to have to then say something by the close of business on the 20th. Now, let's see. Yeah.
Not on the 20th. Hope getting us the information back.
You good? You have any trouble, anything, anything special? You like Chinese, huh? So?
We like what we see on the 18th, then we will approve it on the 18th. But you're saying if we don't give you more changes and then you'll get it back to us by end of business on the 20th?
Correct.
Okay, but that's...
But we need to, we'll need to advertise it as such. We'll need to advertise it as final adoption of the budget.
You've already done that, sir. You're allowed now to adopt it anytime all the way up until January 31st as a retro budget without actually having to re-advertise anything.
So it is possible that we would approve the budget on January the 18th?
You could, yes, sir.
All right. That would certainly be my desire so that we can, we can all move on to more problems and opportunities.
We'll advertise a whole, a placeholder for the 25th at 3:00 just in case. If y'all will pencil it in, you may not need it, but...
25th of January?
Yes, sir. But that way, just in case, you still have the placeholder.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That was somewhat painless, our response.
I, I had a question here. I didn't, I didn't know where to put it, but I just needed a status update on something we signed and are supposed to be working on middle of last year when Mike was with us. A GIS mapping project we approved and signed a grant on May the 1st. Government's going to give us $4,000 and we're going to spend $26,66.66. Are we working that?
Not right now. We don't have a staff member in community development right now.
You know, we have deadlines, April 1st and whatnot.
Yeah, we've communicated with the state about that.
Okay.
State says that we're only able to use a, a certified individual, so...
We have a plan for accomplishing this project because we've signed a contract with them.
Okay. And last but certainly not least, Ms. Sarah, have to give us a financial update.
Good afternoon. This is up on the website and the latest check register, which is through December, is up on the website as well. These financials are through November. And you can see that's 11 months through the year, 91.7% for those who like ratios, percentages. In the top section, we have the general fund. Our operating cash is up to almost $6 million because we do have a big surge at the end with all of our property tax coming in. So it's higher than last month. And then our unassigned fund balance, that's from the last year audit. That's $6.3 million. The next box shows our revenue stats, some of the major ones in the general fund. And we do have some timing differences there. Our sales tax, we are slightly from last year, but we still have December to collect. And then the amounts we received in January are actually attributable to 2016. So that'll be put in 2016 as well. So we have two more months worth coming. Property tax, you can see we're down compared to last year, but again, it's more of a timing issue. So I know we received over $900,000 in December and anything received in January and February that's attributable to 2016 will be put into this year as well. Fines and forfeitures, I've mentioned this in the past few months, but we have changed as a request of our auditor how we were posting those. So that's why that does look different. But next year, we'll have two years to compare. So we'll have better comparison figures there. Occupational tax, we are at 97% of our budget as of November. And I know we received more this month and we are up compared to last year. Overall, the fund, our budget for both revenue and expense is just over $12 million. You can see there. Year to date, our revenue is just at $7.5 million and our expense is $9. almost $7 million. Again, the discrepancy there with our revenue coming in later in the year. So we still have December and then early 2017. Enterprise fund, our total cash operating is a negative $305,000. As we've mentioned in the past, this doesn't mean our bank balance is a negative. It's part of the pooled cash. However, if you remember last month, it was about a negative $600,000. So we are seeing some improvement here at the end of the year. Our investments, which are CDs, are just over $2 million. Our outstanding bond is $33 million. And then our unrestricted net position is $1.4 million. The next box is the revenue statistics and you can see water sales and sewer sales both up compared to last year. And we do expect another month and a half of revenue to be included in that. So looking pretty good there compared to the budget. And then fund status is, you can see, our expense is higher than our revenue so far at that point in the year. But again, we do have more revenue coming in, a month and a half worth. But we did experience the higher, higher water purchases and some of the major repairs that we had this year. But I will point out that even though our expenses are higher than last year, we have not gone over our budget. So that's good news. Enterprise fund, solid waste, if we got one more. This fund, the operating cash, again, this doesn't mean our bank balance is negative, but as part of the pool, basically this fund owes money to the pool of $215,000 and our equity is negative as well. The year to date revenue is $710,000, which is only about 80% of the budget. But we do expect one more, one and a half more months to be posted to this because we read the meters, well, our solid waste fund and our water sewer fund are kind of a half of a month in over years. And then the overall year to date expense is slightly higher than the revenue. And that may just be a timing of when our bills are paid compared to when our revenue comes in. So, any questions on that? I will say, we did have the auditors in last week for just an interim visit. So that's already started and it went smoothly. The things that actually held us up at the last year's audit, we did those first and they're now out of the way. So I'm happy about that. But they'll be back for their visit in April. Any questions?
Thank you. Okay, y'all will have to remind me. On consent agenda, do we go back through these items now and figure out which ones we're going to put on consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, going back to...
You have unanimous, unanimous of the council. And then at the meeting, if any council member wants to pull, they can yank when you go to adoption of the... And then at the meeting, if any council member wants to pull, they can, um, yank when you go to, uh, adoption of the agenda, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna go down the list here, tab A, one. Yes or no? Do not put it on the consent agenda?
On the consent agenda, we don't have all the information.
Okay. Is that consensus of the council?
That takes it one.
That's all it takes is one, never mind. I didn't listen to what he just said. Uh, item two, soccer uniforms?
Yes, for more information?
Athletic uniforms?
Council asks for more information?
Tab B, item one.
All, all of those are...
Public hearings.
Our public hearings, so not, don't tab B.
They can come off?
There really wasn't anything you discussed tonight that can go on the consent agenda.
C two, C two.
I saw something else on here.
Yeah, why, why have an extra vote?
We need to talk about that more.
Nah, put that on the consent agenda.
Well... Yeah, it does make sense because she gonna vote anyway, so...
Whee! So nothing's on the consent agenda?
They just have another long meeting.
Wow, great. Okay, do I hear a motion or we adjourn?
No motions, no votes.
Okay.
Um, I will say that, um, we've been upgraded to a winter storm warning now. So, um, do expect, um, uh, winter weather starting tomorrow. Um, starting at zero three hundred hours tomorrow, we'll be running a four-person crew twenty-four seven, um, through, uh, Saturday, um, in order to, uh, keep our, um, streets nice and clean, so, um, uh, we'll be buying some pizzas and, uh, hot chocolate and coffee.
Let me point out, looks like we're, Tuesday, we're meeting five forty-five instead of six.
I can tell you what you can do at five forty-five.
Yes, yes, yes.
Tuesday, we're meeting five forty-five for the public.
Yeah, you have a meeting before the regular meeting.
So you have to come at five forty-five, ready to go.
I'm glad somebody said that.
For what?
Public, the annual public facilities meeting?
Chairman, vice chairman of that, for the year.